We are on the air, so good evening everyone and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council Meeting for November 5th, 2013. I'll call the meeting to order and let's just get straight to roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please if you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Next up is the adoption of tonight's agenda and I'm just going to mention we do have a presentation coming from the interim administrator of our Veterans Home, Stan Jones, but he is going to be delayed until approximately 6:30, so we will just push that item back if he is not here when we get to that item, which is going to be in just a few minutes, I suspect. Other than that, are there any changes or is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now it's time for public comment, so if there's anything to be brought to the council's attention that's not on tonight's agenda, I'll invite anyone to bring that up now. Seeing none, we'll move right along. Next is a consent calendar. Are there any changes or is there a motion to be had about the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
They're second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimously passed as well. I do want to just recognize on behalf of the entire council, our town manager, Steve Rogers, for your lengthy efforts in the recycled water agreements that we just very quickly said yes to. It's been a very long process, I just wanted to recognize all the efforts that went into that.
Well, I'd like to expand that and say it's a shared effort that also a lot of credit goes to Graham Wadsworth, Public Works Director, Don Moore, our operation, our consulting crew with GHD, and a lot of the hard work and legwork on the tail end with our deputy town attorney, Alyssa Wickstrom, helping us to wrap up the details and provide just a little bit of push to get everybody onto the dotted line. So it truly was a team effort.
Great, well, thanks all of you for helping make that happen, so very much appreciated. Next up, presentations. We're going to start with a presentation recognizing Bouchon Restaurant's 15th anniversary and I know that we have some representatives from the restaurant here tonight, so I'll invite, Eric, are you going to come up to the podium? Eric Lillavah is the COO of the TKRG Restaurant Group and Justin Williams, General Manager. Looks like you're both going to join me.
Sure.
(laughing)
Might as well come up too, come on, might as well.
That's right, we should get Chef up front. I'm going to just ask Justin if you could stand over here, because we've got folks at home and around the world that are watching, I suspect.
This is a proclamation recognizing Bouchon Yountville's 15th anniversary on October 14th, 2013. Whereas in October 1998, four years after his successful debut in Napa Valley with the French Laundry, Chef Thomas Keller opened Bouchon, offering authentic French bistro cuisine and late night dining, a raw bar, and an extensive wine selection with Chef Keller's signature attention to detail in ingredients, presentation, and service. And whereas the restaurant located at 6534 Washington Street, features a French zinc bar, mosaic floor, antique light fixtures, an expansive hand painted mural in the classic Adam Tahaney, I got it wrong last time too, Tahaney designed dining room, and provides outdoor dining on the patio and courtyard where patrons can enjoy picturesque views of Yountville and the western hills of Napa Valley. And whereas Bouchon consistently has received accolades from the food industry, international press, and the general public, highlighted by a one-star rating from the world renowned Star Rating System for Culinary Excellence, The Michelin Guide, and once again this year, 2013, retaining that star, as well as many other regional, national, and international publications and rating agencies. And whereas Yountville is a premier destination for visitors from around the world that balances the charm and community spirit of a small town with unparalleled dining and award-winning wine. Bouchon is one of the highly acclaimed restaurants that has resulted in Yountville being referred to as the culinary capital of the Napa Valley. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor, on behalf of the Town Council and entire Yountville community, do recognize and congratulate Bouchon on this date, October 14th, 2013, which is the 15th anniversary of opening in Yountville.
Congratulations. (applause) We'll just take a little quick pose for the camera, everybody at home. All right, so if you, if any or all of you would like to share some comments, feel free.
Sure, I'll say just a couple of words. Thank you very much, Mayor Dunbar, council staff, for this distinguished honor. Thomas wishes he could be here today. I spoke to him earlier, I forgot to ask where he was in the world, I can't keep track anymore. But this honor, 15 years, for any restaurant in the life of a restaurant is significant and we couldn't have got here without the support of the community and each of you as the offerings for Bouchon have continued to grow over the years. Chef opened this restaurant 15 years ago with the express purpose of having a place for him and his team to go after work. When they were cooking at the French Laundry, they had nowhere to go late night. So he opened Bouchon with the purpose of just having a place that he could go with his team. And Bouchon later spawned Bouchon Bakery and today we're serving brunch on the weekends and through your collaboration, we are doing large parties in our courtyard in the evening and that courtyard has become such a wonderful place for the community to gather during the day and all that born out of a small idea 15 years ago. So thank you for noticing and acknowledging us and we're looking forward to 15 more.
Thank you very much, Justin, Chef, thank you.[422.34][422.34](applause) As I stated at the opening of the meeting, we do have an Allied Council update coming from Administrator Jones, but we will just get to that when he is able to get here. So we're going to move on to our public hearings. The first, Yountville Municipal Code, introduction and first reading, mending the code for weed and rubbish abatement. Let's start with a staff report, please.
Good evening. The item before you tonight is an attempt to update our nuisances chapter of the municipal code to better assist staff in identifying nuisance conditions that are violations and then proceeding to enforcement on these items. This was presented to the ZDRB in a workshop format and then later to the Town Council with a proposed amendment to the ordinance that really had a property maintenance thrust to it. And that was at the suggestion of staff because the current municipal code does not have a comprehensive chapter. There are chapters on nuisances, on weed and rubbish abatement, and on the storing and parking of vehicles and we thought that it could be helpful. The feedback that we received from the council was that there was little interest in enforcing aesthetic property standards and to really put a focus on those conditions that pose a health, safety, and welfare detriment. And it was, the idea was to give residents more freedom to maintain their yards and then to store items that are not appropriate in front yards in their rear yards. We did not hear support from the council in prohibiting inoperable items in yards where there was some subjectivity as to the desirability of the item and one of the items mentioned was an old historic farm implement. We also heard there was little interest in regulating the parking or storage of vehicles when it's on a driveway, when it's a side or rear yard, which includes the setbacks, or for the long-term storage of vehicles. For the limiting the placement of trash or recycle bins on the street near collection day, or for establishing a landscape maintenance standards. So with that feedback, staff revised the suggestion to you and a revised nuisances chapter of the code is proposed. That ordinance includes a purpose statement, the purpose of which is to explain the intent of what we're really trying to go after with these nuisance conditions and it's really the unreasonable and unsightly nuisances that are a detriment to a neighborhood and those that are detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. And this purpose section will be helpful to staff in interpreting whether a potential property is a violation or not of the code. We've also included this new section on definitions to give greater definition to the terms that we think we're regulating under this ordinance and there are terms such as junk and junkyard and refuse and it further establishes the intent. The main substance of the proposed ordinance is in the section entitled Declaration of Nuisance Conditions and this lays out a broader category of conditions that would lead to a nuisance and they're more specific as to those items. The item number three identifies items that are not permitted in yards that are visible from the street and each of the items listed are those that are better kept in a screened area such as a garage or a storage shed or an enclosed backyard. And our list here was an attempt to establish objective and definable standards for you. So 3A and B clarify and expand upon conditions that are noted in the existing nuisances chapter. These are items of little or no value, they've essentially been discarded in a yard visible from the street. 3C applies to the dumping of salvage construction or packing materials when these are not part of an active construction project. 3D applies to firewood that has been simply dumped in a front yard and there's an exception that would be granted for firewood that's neatly stacked or otherwise screened from the street. 3E and F both apply to vehicles, showing, the first one being that the inoperable vehicles are not permitted in front yards and that the parking of vehicles is limited to driveways and other approved parking spaces and this is to limit the parking on front lawns or in other front yard landscaped areas. Numbers four and five apply to all yards throughout town, whether they're visible from the street or not, and there's a higher threshold to establish a violation for these items in the backyard. They would have to be detrimental to health, safety, and welfare and that could be an infestation of rodents, a collection of hazardous wastes, or an accumulation of fire hazard materials, or it could be a condition that creates a junkyard. And so aesthetic concerns in rear yards are not an issue as to numbers four and five. One of the items that would fall within these items would be the storage and collection of vehicles in a rear yard and the sections are not specific as to the number of vehicles or the condition of vehicles that wouldn't be permitted. And it's really something that would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis as to whether they result in a detriment to health, safety, and welfare or whether it's a junkyard condition. And so where one car on one property may be a violation, it may be a few more on another property to result in a violation. It is somewhat subjective, but it does give staff a stronger tool for working with backyard conditions. Number six addresses weeds and it incorporates all weed violations into a single code section. Number, many of these are already in the code, so I'll just skip to the ones that are new. Proposed new section relates to fences that are in a hazardous condition or in a state of disrepair. Number 10 relates to odors that are persistent and elevated and the focus of this new regulation really results from the trend for keeping backyard chickens and we've had this issue where there are significant odors in backyards and we've approached it more from the general nuisance perspective and having this in more specificity, we think will be stronger. The last new item proposed is number of F-11 and it's regarding the keeping of animals that create some sort of problem, either that they're damaging private property or they're causing unsanitary or dangerous conditions. It generally won't apply unless there's a significant problem with an animal. Perhaps if you have animals that you let roam at large and they're damaging property, it could give us an additional tool for that. Dogs at large are already regulated under a separate code section on animals, but again, this would give us a little stronger position from the nuisances perspective. So we are recommending that you amend the Yountville Municipal Code to delete the chapter on weed and rubbish abatement, to incorporate selected portions into the chapter on nuisances, and then to amend the nuisances section to be as you see before you tonight. As I was proofreading this tonight, I noticed there is one small edit that should be made to section 9.32.020, the definitions, number four. The second line references owners and producers, it should be, it references owner and producer, they should both be plural. So without one change, we would recommend approval.
Thank you very much. And as we open the public hearing, part of this, does the council have any questions about the staff report as it's written? Councilmember Muller?
Yeah. I wanted to talk about chickens. So are chickens allowed or chickens not allowed? Or is it subjective?
We apply the same standard as Napa where you can have six chickens. You cannot have roosters and so it's otherwise regulated on the chicken coop and the location in terms of setbacks and height, but because of our small yards, six chickens itself can pose a problem as to odors or other issues.
So do we have chickens and some other ordinance? I couldn't find it when I did a search.
No, not specific to Yountville.
All right, but that's our policy, unwritten. All right, thanks.
And to follow up on that, what is the process for enforcement of whether it be odor or noise related to barnyard animals?
I've enforced a couple of such violations since I've been here. They start with a letter of notification to an owner letting them know that we've received a complaint. It's always been on a complaint because staff isn't aware of it, but a neighbor is, advising them of the situation and then it is cleared over time. In one case, there were approximately 100 chickens in one backyard and impacts were significant. The owner was not aware until he received the letter, but he did then comply with the code.
Okay, other questions on the staff report? Vice Mayor?
I didn't expect to talk about chickens, but, so your answer to Councilman Muller was we enforce a six chicken limit, but we don't actually have that in the code?
Yeah, we enforce an informal policy based on Napa's regulations. We haven't adopted it as part of our code.
The city of Napa?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to, I guess, back up on, let me flip over. I was trying to read the code online. So this proposed ordinance does not prohibit people from leaving a wrecked or abandoned or non-operative car in their backyard necessarily? Is that correct?
Not unless it is to the level of a junkyard condition or creates a detriment to health, safety, and welfare. So it will be a case-by-case evaluation.
So you can't, you can't have an abandoned, wrecked, disabled, or inoperative, which I guess is, I mean, there's a legal term for that, right, a planned non-operation? That cannot be out in the public view, no matter how it's publicly viewed, but if it's in private view, you could have a car that's in your backyard that nobody can see, that is potentially okay?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
There is one clarification I'd like to just share with everybody. Chapter 17.24.030 does indicate that foul, which is a category including chickens and duck, can be allowed from a non-commercial point in a residential area. So I just want to make sure that that's sort of the one point where it is potentially permitted as long as it's not for a commercial purpose.
So to follow up on what's been brought up already about this, why would we not put the explicit language of a maximum number of chickens or barnyard animals?
I guess if the council would like us to move forward with that, we can certainly bring the chicken clarification ordinance to the council in a future meeting.
It is an issue in my neighborhood, I know for a fact, so this isn't just a generic concern.
No, and I'm not making light of it, but the code section in section 17 references several things like rabbits and so I think it might be time for us just to try to apply something. So you're right, it's always helpful to have the standard with which we're enforcing, but I will echo what Sandra Smith has indicated, that we have had several complaints in varying natures, from the number, from the odor, to the chickens don't stay in my neighbor's backyard, they come visit my backyard and they get upset when my dog chomps on their chicken. So there's little things like that that we do need to pay a little attention to.
Okay, and I know Councilmember Hall has something, but is it pertaining specifically to this?
The issue that you guys are presently discussing.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a question with regards to that. So not every yard is created equal as well, so I'd be a little, I guess my question is, although six is your informal threshold, if I live on an acre parcel in Yountville and there are very few, I would speculate if any, why would I be held to the same threshold as someone that lives in a postage stamp like I do? I want to, I just want us to be careful not to overreach. I'm comfortable with an informal rule around this, I just, my question is, is six a hard fast number for every yard?
Well, there may be a different number that the council would like to adopt as part of a comprehensive, you know, animal update to the code.
But informally, informally is six a hard fast number?
It is.
Okay, all right. That's what I mean, it's not a hard.
Well, does staff, was it intentional that you left a precise number out so that it could be evaluated based on the conditions?
No, we really looked to the rules that Napa adopted and they have many similar smaller sized parcels and similar conditions and we felt it was appropriate to limit the number of chickens in a similar manner. Because it's not specific to Yountville and it's not in our animal control section of the code, it's not specific to us. It could be if it's, if that's something the council would like us to look into.
Well, I think to speak to Councilmember Hall's question, we do have a general understanding of our maximum and minimum lot sizes, so if we want to make the specific number an issue tonight, we can evaluate that.
My suggestion, may I, my suggestion would be that staff will come back, the section we're talking about actually would be clarification in chapter 17 of our zoning rather than the nuisance structure here. So with the feedback, my suggestion would be you leave the language in this structure because I think the council's correct. There may be a handful of lots where we do have some larger lots and a couple of sections that we may want to have some variation, but staff would like to go back and revisit chapter 17 and we'll come back with a little more guidance on the animal in a more specific. We were talking more about it here, it's a potential cause, not anticipating getting into the specifics of chapter 17, which we will, with your indulgence, you'll be seeing that shortly.
Fair enough. I also have a question back on the abandoned vehicle language. Have we defined what abandoned? Do we have actual language about what is abandonment of a vehicle? Is it a certain number of days it has been?
We have a couple of issues that are addressed that, not specifically as to being abandoned. We do define inoperative vehicle and we define junk as anything that is caft off, junk, salvaged, scrapped, and salvageable. It could apply to vehicles in a broader sense and then we also identify it, storage and what's permissible and storage would be anything over 72 hours. So it's really all of that taken together that would try to get, go after the abandoned vehicle without naming it specifically.
And we've touched on this also about the visibility of said abandoned, et cetera, et cetera, and I know we have properties where a neighbor has a two-story property that can look directly over and into what they may consider a junkyard condition, but it's not visible from the street from the front of the house. Are we addressing that?
We are. If we establish a junkyard condition from a second floor of a resident neighbor's property, we could enforce that under numbers four or five. It would be on the active, the hest of a neighbor to invite us to their house, to view the condition, and to establish these standards, but we believe four and five gives us that opportunity.
Okay. Any other questions about the report? No, then I'll...
Yes, Vice Mayor.
That's, I'll ask later.
Okay, I'll invite any member of the public that would like to speak on this item, if they would. Seeing none, moving forward, I'll return the discussion back to the council, close the public hearing, and invite discussion, Vice Mayor?
Sandra, I guess my, you talked, the question the mayor just asked, which is, you're getting into leeway. Ultimately, you and your old department are the ones who have the joy of enforcing this. Do you feel like there's enough specificity here that you could go to someone and say, this is where I have the problem with the chicken ordinance or the lack thereof, of saying, you can only, you can't have seven chickens and I, my responsibility, where does it say that? Do you feel like in what we're talking about here today, that we have been specific enough that you can take action that's reasonable?
I think it does. I have one property in mind that I think will be successful in going after, that we've been challenged in the past because we haven't had an ordinance of this specificity and there's been some wiggle room, so we've been, really have been considering those examples we've had in the past and have tried to craft this ordinance around it. We want it to be specific, but we also want to leave room to allow some interpretation and some evaluation on a case-by-case basis.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, absolutely. This is council discussion and potential action.
Well, I guess my one comment on that is the issue of, really comes down to the non-operative or practically abandoned, large items, vehicle, a boat, something like that. You know, if you have a car and you're gonna, you know, it's old and you're working on it and that kind of thing, that's not an issue to me. It's just when somebody drags an old car that they're not paying registration for, probably after a year or two, couldn't reasonably operate anyway, and that's what their neighbors get to see, I have that concern of whether this is specific enough, so...
Well, if we're only talking one inoperable vehicle, this ordinance is not likely to go after that. It's going to have to be a higher level of violation. Multiple vehicles, let's say maybe a boat, a trailer, and a car, other discarded items could fall within the junkyard definition, or where those vehicles lead to infestation of rodents, or because of the hazardous materials stored in the vehicle, they cause a problem.
Okay.
It's going to be, it is subjective, but it's the number and it's the intensity of the violation. It won't just be one vehicle.
So I would say as just a comment to the rest of the council, I think my only concern with this, what we've put together, is I would rather see us have a little more specificity on if you have a non-operated vehicle, if it's there for a year, it never moves, there's no, you know, you can't demonstrate any plan to do something with it and it just deteriorates out there, that we would have some ability to do something. Or a boat, or some old RV that is, you know, it's going to end up in the Orange County Fair for the RV wars or something, right? I mean, I think we don't want to see that, so that's the only thing that I, only concern I have about what's been put together here.
Excuse me?
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yeah, Louis, do you mean that if someone has one of those vehicles in their back garden, in their backyard?
Yes.
If I could, I think staff's trying to strike a balance between the conversation and the concerns that the ZDRB and the council had and yet try to provide some purposeful dialogue. We think this is a significant improvement from the tools that we had previously and I also would tell you, I think if it doesn't work... And I also would tell you, I think if it doesn't work, we'll be very happy to come back to you after some time to say we need to perhaps refine this section. But I do think when you look at it, it gives us a couple of different approaches to a vehicle. And again, we heard very clearly from the council that the council wasn't all that concerned about a vehicle that was perhaps stored in an operable, but in the driveway, you know, so there's a fine line there. But I do think, you know, this is an area where maybe we need to get a little experience with it, and in a year, we can give you an update as to how it's working, and if there's need for refinement. But we also, we heard loud and clear incremental tighten, but not a drastic overhaul of our current approach. And I do want to stress that staff uses an education outreach first, even though I realize that not everybody thinks a letter suggesting they take care of something is a polite outreach, because unfortunately, we're usually telling them. But we really do, and it is that. It just starts a dialogue, staff follows up. And I have to say that, for the most part, we've been very pleased in general that that approach works in our community, and probably on 90% of the cases. And then unfortunately, the other 10% take up quite a bit of staff time and resources to address.
So, I'll encourage additional dialogue with the council. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, thank you very much for putting this together. I think that you really did kind of do a very thorough job of what the ZDRB and our last council discussion. So, overall, I am fine with that. I know that as we move ahead, and you take care of some of the issues now that you have this tool in your toolbox, that if we need further refinement, I'm certainly willing to bring it back at that time, and take care of any unintended consequences that we may have put, or not put into this ordinance. So, I'm fine with how it stands. I also really like that you put in the item about fences, because I think that is something that we didn't really think about before, but I have heard that from people as well, so I'm glad you put that in. The only thing that I would suggest as a change, since this is, the word nuisance is in the title, and it's also a chapter on nuisances, that we add that to the definitions. And I think, Sandra, you actually identified it earlier when you were giving your staff report. I don't know if I wrote it down correctly, but would be a physical condition that is extremely unsightly or undesirable, you said something like that, that's dangerous or detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of persons, or the property, something like that. Just seems a definition for nuisance would be relevant. So, other than that, I'm fine.
Councilmember Hall, you have specific comments?
No, nothing more than, I mean, I think, again, this is, it's a good balance from where we were, obviously cleaning up the code, eliminating the one, consolidating it into the Section 9. And again, my principal objective here was not to overreach. I think the incremental step is the right approach. Certainly, there hasn't been a lot of public outcry, but about this issue, at least not here tonight, and that's good, because it shows perhaps that we're getting a balance that's maybe closer to what is expected of the community. So, I think this reaches that balance. I want to follow up on Councilmember Mueller's comment about adding a definition of a nuisance, or what nuisance is, is that what you're suggesting as part of the definitions?
Correct, right.
Thank you. I think that's reasonable. I mean, a nuisance is sometimes independently determined by everyone's neighbor, what we all define as a nuisance. But I think if we could clarify that, perhaps it would make it even easier for people to understand what it really is, and not have individuals overreach. But, okay, that's my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I want to also thank you for hearing us when we talked about this the first time. I noticed that the, when you were talking about the process, you said we begin with sending them a letter, and then can you tell me the rest of the process, please, Sandra?
If they don't respond to the courtesy letter, we would send a formal notice of nuisance and intent to abate, which gives them 30 days to correct the violation, which gives them a right to appeal. And generally, that leads to the resolution of the issue. That's a more severe letter to get. However, in at least one occasion, we've gone beyond that and taken it to a hearing before the nuisances control officer, and had a formal decision of nuisance abatement that resulted from that. But that's very rare that we don't get compliance by the first letter, most often times then, and definitely not by the second formal letter.
And can you tell me, in the case of having to take it to the, you know, the hearing and all, what are the fees that are, you know, that the person who's created the nuisance must pay for that?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but we are entitled to recover our costs, and our formal notice to them includes that warning provision.
Okay. And are those fees published somewhere?
If I could, Councilmember Dornbecker, we use a cost recovery, so it's all based on what the effort the town spent. So, it's not a fixed fee, because, for example, under the current ordinance that the council's approved under nuisance abatement, we would be able to go back and recover all of the staff time crafting, all of the effort, so we would track that. And then it would be applied at the, our hourly wage structure that includes the full cost of the employee, and if there were any supplies, equipment used in that. Potentially, if we ended up doing, for example, if we cleared the site or did something like that, those types of costs would get added. So, it's not a fixed fee, but it is a evaluation, and we do advise them. And again, we do not charge a fixed appeal fee on this, because typically, as the process is alluded to, it would go to a designated hearing officer, then it would go to the town manager, and then if they're not satisfied, they have recourse before the council.
And so, there is no essentially penalty fee associated with this?
Just cost recovery of costs?
Well, I want to clarify, because at some point in time, it also can become, depending on how we process it, a violation of the town's municipal code, and that could trigger penalties under the potential violation of the municipal code. So, you have two components that potentially the party could be subject to. So, in most cases, if we're going down that point, we are going to probably be charging them with a violation of the municipal code as well.
I see, thank you.
Any other comments prior to you?
No, I'm very comfortable. I think that it's, this is just enough and not too much, because I was concerned too about overreaching. And I do feel uncomfortable about telling people what they can or cannot have in their backyard, unless we can see it from the street, if they can see it from the right of way. But, and I understand that some neighbors may have a problem, so if they're reaching out to the town and asking for our help, then I can understand our getting, and, you know, doing intervention in that case. But I think it's well done. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, I agree as well. I think we want to make sure that we don't turn into a, you know, a homeowners association gone wild, and there's certainly many communities who have restrictions on their residents, and nitpick things that go well, well beyond Yountville. I think everybody sees Yountville, and sees what it is, and thinks that we must have outrageously strict codes. And amazingly, I think we have somewhat the opposite, is that most people want to have a beautiful community. So, I certainly support what we're doing here, and I trust that staff will come back if there's issues that we need to address.
Thank you. And I feel like, Sandra, you've done a great job. Staff in general has done a very appropriate job of hearing what the council direction was leading up to this, and you've put a very appropriate package together here. I would not, I don't find it necessary to add what I would consider redundancy of a definition of a nuisance when you have the entire section of 9.32.040 that explains what nuisance conditions are. I think that's the definition. So, I don't think it's necessary to put a Webster's dictionary definition of the word nuisance in here. I think less is more, and that's what the message was here, that we leave some discretion to staff to evaluate the complaints as they come in. So, I feel like this is appropriate as it's been presented. So, is there any other deliberation, or is there action to be taken? This is reminding an introduction and first reading of this ordinance. Councilmember Hall?
I'm sorry, I just have one other question with regards to this ordinance, and perhaps it's identified somewhere else in municipal code. What about, because I know you purposefully exclude, I think weeds are in here, but what about large, large trees, or bushes, or things that are dead, or vegetation that's not being properly maintained? Is that, how is that issue?
That would be included under the weeds section. It's not just limited to weeds. It speaks of dead, decayed, diseased vegetation that creates a hazardous condition, in which may be a danger to public safety. That could be a dead tree, other overgrown vegetation that creates a problem.
Okay. I read it. I thought, I thought that there was a section that said it had to be, if it was putting at risk a vehicle, and I thought, if it's in your backyard, the only vehicle is a junkyard car that you have in the backyard?
Well, maybe overgrown, as to sidewalk or street conditions, where it creates a problem.
Okay, thank you.
So, is there action to be had on this item?
I can make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 418-13 with the inclusion of a definition for nuisance. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Yountville, amending the Yountville municipal code to delete Title 8, Chapter 0.08, weed and rubbish abatement, and to amend Title 9, Chapter 9.32, nuisances to incorporate the weed and rubbish provisions into the nuisance chapter, and to modify the nuisance chapter to include a purpose statement, provide definitions, and expand upon the categories of conditions that create a public nuisance.
I'll second.
For clarity, are you proposing that definition, or are you leaving it to staff to create a definition in your motion?
Well, I propose one that Sandra gave earlier. Would you like to read that back?
I think I just may have said it without writing it down, but I would say something to the effect that nuisance is defined as an unsightly physical condition that includes improper storage of material, or the unlawful condition or use of property that's a detriment to health, safety, and welfare. Something of that nature, I might work at more, given more time to think about it.
That would be fine, I think it gives clarity, and it brings in the health, safety, and welfare, which is really what we're talking about.
So, there has been a motion and a second. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment on the motion?
Well, I guess I'll ask a question of our assistant town attorney. I mean, we're talking about a definition that somebody's gonna point to and say, well, it says physical condition, and an odor is not a nuisance, because it doesn't say physical condition. I mean, should we, can we pass this with general guidelines for them to go back, or should, I mean, how do we do this?
What we can do, and what maybe is a best practice, and I think we might put ourselves in a tricky situation, asking staff to come up with a definition on the fly, and then asking then the town clerk to get all of that down, and then that is going to come back and be translated. I think that that may create more problems than maybe benefit that the council member is trying to accomplish, particularly since what I heard staff say was unlawful. And so, to me, that almost became a circular situation, where the definition was calling something unlawful, and then in the rest of the ordinance, you're making it unlawful. And so, that's a really circular sort of situation to me.
Could we say that, and then what's been said, and then having the second reading come back?
Well, actually, that's correct. We can clarify in the second reading. So, what we'll do is, and we can do that. But I do agree that it's, what we want to do is make sure that that definition reflects what the council wants, and if it's not at second reading, that draft, you would make modifications at that point in time.
So, would it be best to just leave as the motion, and I'll ask if the council member making the motion would revise the motion, to say a nuisance definition to be determined, is that better than having a definition that you feel is inappropriate?
That would be the town attorney's preference, yes.
And I'm comfortable with that.
And is the second?
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second with, the presentation as presented with a nuisance definition to be added, with language to be added prior to the second reading?
And that's an interjection, and waive the reading for clarification once again?
Yes, and I will add that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I see that we do have our 7B presentation here. So, before we proceed to our next public hearing, I'd like to invite interim Veterans Home Administrator Stan Jones to come, and first of all, welcome, and give us an allied, or a Veterans Home update.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, council, for having me, and giving me some leeway on the schedule today.
Mike isn't.
My main purpose today would be introduce myself, kind of...
Sorry, just to point that a little bit more towards you there. Great, thank you.
How's that?
That's much better.
Kind of introduce myself, let you know who I am. I know quite a few of you. My name is Stan Jones. I am the acting administrator at the Veterans Home here in Yountville. Most of you have seen me mainly because of my wife here, Diane. We've been in Yountville for about three and a half years. I worked here before. I took a promotion at headquarters in Sacramento, and then was asked to step in about four weeks ago at home here. Nurse by background, 30 years of healthcare experience, so I've run facilities like this in the past. So, a little bit about me, things that are going on. First, I want to talk about the chef's luncheon, the home, and the administration at the home is extremely pleased that we're having our ninth annual chef's luncheon this Thursday. The generosity of the chefs and the town is just amazing to us, so we thank you for that. Veterans Day is obviously on the 11th, so we have a flurry of activities up there. The Toast of the Armistice is one of the bigger ones. It's at 11:11 a.m. that day. And the Napa Film Festival is going on at the Lincoln Theater, so you're all welcome to join us. One thing that I wanted to share is we have, I did have a meeting with Mayor Dunbar and town manager Steve Rogers, along with my boss, Undersecretary Vanderpot, just over, just about a week ago.
Right.
So, one of the things we wanted to do is reopen communication with the town, and I believe that it was a very good meeting, and we continue and are committed to keeping that communication open. So, we will be sharing, we'll be getting together again, and so we want to make sure that we are connected to the town. It was very important to us. So, with that, that was it that's going on, but I'll answer questions at first, any.
I do have one, and that's, can you provide an update about a public information officer? I know that process has begun and is ongoing, or complete?
It is. JP Tremblay, who is our headquarters' main communication director, deputy secretary, and I reviewed applications. We have several strong candidates. The interviews are set up for this Friday. JP will be coming down along with one of his coworkers, and myself will do the interviews. And I believe that probably by the end of this month, we will have a candidate in place for PIO.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome, as in your official capacity, but I've seen you at all of the town events.
Social events, yes.
But I wanted to ask about the long-range program that was presented, and which we have received copies of for the home, you know, the five-year plan, or the 30-year plan, whatever.
The master plan.
The master plan. And I was wondering what the status of that is, or are we going to be hearing more about that, or?
We talked about that in our meeting with the undersecretary. Her direction is that we have enough to do with what we have, and there is no plans at this point to move forward with anything that is a revenue-producing project that is not strictly for veterans. So, the big thing that we talked about was the hotel undergrounds. That, we talked, there was like two sentences about it, but that's what everybody picked up on. There is no intent on moving forward with that. So, we will, and we talked at our meeting, we will be communicating with the town when there are things that we need to move forward on.
Thank you.
So, if that's the question you're asking, yes. We can, we plan on communicating.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Stan, congratulations, first of all.
Thanks, Liz.
You're... Your acting, what's the process or do you have any expectation on the process of determining who the permanent director of the home would be?
Sure. The, the ad went out about two weeks ago and so far, we have three applications for that position permanent. The undersecretary is looking to maybe get some more to have a better choice, if you will. And we have a panel, in the state, you have a panel of at least three people to interview the candidates. Then the three people will select their top choice. Once, and Undersecretary Vanderpot will be on that panel. Once a recommendation or a decision is made, a recommendation is made to the governor's office because it is an appointed position. And then the governor's office then re-interviews the top one or two candidates that they recommend, that we recommend, then they make the final decision. I would guess January.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's a guess.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
You've already knocked two of the things off my later comments about upcoming events for Veterans Day and the film festival, so thank you for that.
And you have the schedule for the Veterans Day?
Yes.
Okay. I also have a film festival, list of the films.
And they go from, I believe it's one PM to six PM?
Correct.
And free to all veterans and I think it's ten dollars? I'm not sure the price for other members of the public, but very reasonably priced. I know that for a fact, so.
Great.
Great, thanks very much for being here.
Go on.
And just to follow up Councilmember Dornbecker's and the Vice Mayor's questions, I would say we had a very productive conversation with Mr. Jones and Undersecretary Vanderpot. And, and it was made very clear that there are no imminent actions to be taken. I know the master plan was of concern to some of our home members and to the public. So we addressed that basically right up, right up front. There's no money for it, there's no interest in moving forward, so that's not happening anytime soon, especially with the changes in leadership that are happening. Also, their focus has been on opening two other facilities in California. So it's been a very busy and almost, I would say tumultuous time at the CDVA level. So I appreciate your commitment and the undersecretary's commitment to continue to engage us as we're moving forward. So thank you very much for, for being here. I'm sure we'll see, many of us will see you on Thursday with our hats or hairnets on, so.
I suggest a hat.
Definitely. If you don't have your Town of Yountville hat yet, this is a very good reason to buy one. So thank you very much. We're going to move back onto our public hearing schedule. The next one is an introduction and first reading of our ordinance, adding chapters on taxicabs and pedicabs. So I think we should start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is actually following the theme of making sure that we have the appropriate tools in our tool bag. And one of the things upon staff research, when we had a couple inquiries in the last year about what it would require for them to establish or open a taxicab or a pedicab, staff realized that we actually had no guidance and no governance in our municipal code. So in the interest of brevity, what I'm going to share with you is that myself and Assistant Town Attorney Alyssa Wickstrom spent quite a bit of time looking at some different existing taxicabs. And you'll note, we've included pedicabs because there has been interest, at least mentioned to us about that. So what we've attempted to do is put something in place that is appropriate for Yountville that provides all the necessary regulatory requirements, but yet still would encourage one if there was one that was interested in operating. Having said that, the ordinance is quite comprehensive, includes things like definitions, application process enforcement, liability insurance, one of the key requirements that we'd be looking at, what happens, the number of operators, license review role, fare structures, et cetera, et cetera. And again, there's a whole lot of detail in the ordinance and basically the intent tonight is, we have no tool. So the motion and the companion fee resolution would be to establish the fee structure necessary. And again, two key elements, we use an initial deposit and again, the amount of time processing. I do want to point out that law enforcement would have a regulatory review role in terms of screening the applicants and things like that. So there's some role that as our contracted party, the Sheriff's Department. So we are also anticipating an initial $2,500 deposit and then an annual medallion fee for the taxi of 500 and an annual $250 pedicab decal fee. So with that, staff would encourage consideration of the proposed ordinance and fee structure. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have on this ordinance.
Thank you. And since we are kind of the role of the applicant here, that does open our public hearing on this item, are there any questions about the staff report prior to opening it up for public questions? Councilmember Mueller?
I think I understood all the details you have in the staff report, but it's really kind of a bigger question that I have. So how would you go about selecting the, the number of permits that you issue and are we going to have things like three or four cabs lined up in front of such and such building waiting? How's that going to work?
Actually, we took a more conservative approach, which, and we chose not to really engage ourselves in those because we took the approach, we currently do not have a taxi system. Most of the people that have expressed an interest were looking at one or two. And we felt that we can certainly get into a situation of regulating, but for example, putting in something like you're going to have a lottery or there's a maximum of, we just felt that that really, you know, wasn't where we were at. And if we got to the situation where we felt there were too many, then we could come back and look at regulating that. But since we have none, and in many cases, they may operate here for a bit and then take people up Valley, back and forth to Napa, we just felt that that, what we're experiencing, you know, wasn't a situation. Also, I would point out that in most communities where they do actually establish a number, it generally creates a black market or a higher value, if you will, for the medallion than the process. But, so we chose not to go that route. Just if they come in, we're going to review, look at it, and they need to be responsible for their business model.
But just for, for the details, can I, if we issue one of these permits, can one of these or two of these taxicabs just kind of sit on the street waiting? Is that going to be their physical office since they're, I'm just assuming they're probably not going to buy a building and have a, you know, park the cars there or anything like that. So they, they may want to just sit on the street.
There are limitations on that. And, you know, especially also with regard to tax, or pedicabs, there's also limitations on how they just can't stop in the middle of the street when there's traffic. So there are some limitations in the details.
Any other questions about the staff report? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I have a question that I, I want to make sure you understand. So, so the way this works is if I'm a taxicab and I land in Yountville, I pick someone up and I drive them from point A to point B in Yountville, I require a medallion?
No, what I want to clarify, this is if you choose to be a licensed taxicab based and operating out of Yountville.
They have to have nexus here.
For example, right now, there are a number of taxis that can be seen on any given day in Yountville. Most of those are licensed and regulated by the city of Napa. We also have seen taxicabs from the city and county of San Francisco, city of Santa Rosa. We're not changing any of that. You don't have dual, that's their licensing authority. This simply has, and again, we're responding to the fact that a few business people, one of which is a local resident, said, what would it be if I wanted to operate a, a, a taxicab based here to meet some of our community needs? And like I say, it's a, that's the approach. So we, we took both a regulatory and a softer regulatory approach so that if somebody did want to do it, because we have heard concern from some folks that it would be nice potentially if there was a local taxicab.
Okay, and I, I understand that. I just want to make sure I understood how that would work and that they actually would physically have to have nexus in this, in the town limits. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I did notice in the staff report, however, it does mention cab stands and our creating cab stands in the town and painting the curb to designate them cab stands. It's in the report.
Potential. I mean, it's, again, part of this is how do you facilitate something and know, I mean, we also have the situation where our volume is not necessarily something when you think of the urban environment that you're just going to go walk out and flag down the taxicab. In most cases, you're still going to need to call it because, you know, your chances are just driving up and down the street and seeing if somebody picks you up. Again, I'm not comfortable in saying that there's a business model that would support a local-based taxicab, but I certainly think we want to be open if somebody feels there is.
Well, it also, in the staff report, said that they would be prohibited from parking on the, on the public streets and also in the neighborhoods and also by the, you know, municipal buildings. And so, anyway, I, I see some difficulties as I see that, but of course, if you're only talking about one or two taxicabs, that's, that's different than what I was imagining.
It is, and I think that's the challenge that staff has had, Councilmember Dornbecker, is how to have a little flexibility recognizing there's some potential, but not trying to be, for example, taking a large city taxicab regulatory ordinance and trying to imply it in, in Yountville. And it's also hard for us to know what behaviors we may or may not be wanting to oversubscribe. So I'm, that's maybe something that after some time, if we have one and their behavior, then we come back and have some issues. As a general rule, I just want to clarify, a taxicab operator cannot violate any of the typical traffic or vehicle code regulations. So we are concerned that some folks may not just want to see the taxicab sitting outside lurking, if you will, waiting for something.
And my final question is about the fee. Are the fees that you're charging, the $2,500 and then the $500 a year for the taxicab, is it 250 a year for the pedicab?
Let me, again, the initial larger number that you quoted, the 2,500 is not the fee, that's the initial deposit.
Deposit.
So for example, we would only, again, charge the appropriate staff cost, legal review, and law enforcement review of the folks that were in the operating. And that would be.
And painting the, the curb as well, right?
Well, it depends on if we, if they choose to operate with the taxi stab and then we put that fixed cost in, that's correct.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions of the report?
My only question follows up a little bit on Councilmember Hall's question. And I, maybe if you can just clarify how this works. I think about when I used to live in New York where there's lots of cabs. You, if you, if you got a taxi in New York City, took it to, you know, took it to Long Island and went to Nassau County, they could drop you off, but they couldn't pick up somebody in Nassau County and go into Manhattan. They'd have to get somebody from Nassau County a cab there. Is that local ordinance that says that? So I, I think the question I'm asking is, would somebody say, and I would suggest they think this from a business perspective, I don't know how I would set up a taxicab company and make any money in Yountville, but it might be a great place to, you know, it's like the ship's registry. I'm going to register in Yountville, but I can go around and pick up people in the city of Napa. Is that a local ordinance issue that Napa would say you have to be a medallion to pick up people or is that a, how does that work?
Well, part of it, to be perfectly honest, is going to depend on the business model that the taxicab operator has to set forth in the fee structure. So we would need to review that and it's hard in the absence of that to really talk about that. But for example, you know, we have, you know, like I mentioned, there's probably twenty-five taxis in Yountville on a daily basis that come in and go. Some cases, they're picking up, some cases, they're dropping off, some types of people actually, you know, they, they drive them up here, they hold for the time that they're here and then the same taxi takes them back.
Well, I guess that goes to my question of, do we as a jurisdiction have the ability to say, not that we would or should, that if you're going to pick up a person in Yountville, you have to be licensed in Yountville? I, I don't know if that's, if that doesn't apply here.
It could. Now, I would say.
I'm not saying we should do that by any stretch.
Right, and I'm suggesting, we haven't put that structure. You are correct. There are some communities that basically say, if you're picking up, you must be licensed. And that's, that's actually a very common occurrence on the San Francisco Peninsula.
Okay.
And they even have black market taxis and they even have a whole issue of the San Francisco-based taxicabs that are based at the airport that drop off and try to pick up somebody along a peninsula city. I, I do want to point out, we've not gone into those types of stuff and we've actually left a very business model approach where the applicant has to tell us a lot about what it is they're proposing and how they're proposing so that we would respond more to what is submitted rather than us preordaining what we think the appropriate business model would be.
Okay, yeah, that's, I think that's very wise and I, I just, the reason for the question was to make sure we weren't upsetting that balance that if somebody calls a yellow cab of Napa, they can still pick up in Yountville. Yes.
I would. Sixty dollars round trip.
I understand that's expensive.
I would maybe use the example of airport cabs.
Yep.
That can't just pick somebody up off the curb after they've just dropped somebody off, but it would be kind of a crazy idea to think that you could only have a Yountville-based service to pick anybody up in Yountville.
Oh, I agree. I totally agree.
So.
I want to make sure we're not doing that.
Right, okay. Are there any other questions of the report at this time? The, the question I have is more administrative. I'm looking at the action being recommended is to introduce and waive the reading of the ordinance, but also adopt a resolution at the same time, it's in the same staff report, to adopt the fee structure. Why are we not waiting until we actually have an ordinance before we add a fee structure?
It's a perfunctory because the way we're writing our ordinances now, the ordinances make reference to the fact that the fee shall be as established and, and kept in the master fee resolution. So we wanted you to see everything. I mean, if you want to wait for 30 days to adopt it, you know, we're establishing and modifying the fee resolution. It's just so you had the complete package in front of you to take action.
But it's required to have them as separate? Is that why it's done this way?
That is correct.
Okay.
You're adopting the ordinance first and then you'll take a separate action. If you choose to adopt the ordinance, staff would encourage you to adopt the fee resolution, implementing the fee structure.
Introducing the ordinance. We're not adopting it yet.
Introducing, correct. I'll get my nomenclature correct.
So I'll open the public hearing to this in case anybody would like to talk about it. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion and/or potential action from the council. Anyone have a first comment or?
Mayor, I have one more question of staff.
Okay.
Based on your, your last set of comments, can you just address, if we're putting this in place for taxicabs and pedicabs, why we wouldn't do it for if somebody wanted to operate a limo service based in Yountville?
Actually, that's a very good question and we are not authorized to regulate limo service. Limousine services are the, are the purview of the California Public Utility Commission. So we don't have any administrative authority by the state of California.
So they get all the money?
They get everything.
All right, thank you.
They also, I'm just saying, that's a good question, but they're not subject to our purview.
I'm, I guess my comments are, I'm fine and let's see how it works. And if it doesn't work out and we see forty cabs like we used to have in the sixties, then I'm sure we'll want to come back and talk about it.
Is there a motion to be had or is there further discussion required for the introduction?
I'll make a motion, introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number four one nine dash one three, adding chapter five point two four, taxicabs and pedicabs of Title Five of the Town of Yountville Municipal Code by adopting taxicab and pedicab regulations and, I think, adopt resolution number three one four zero dash one three, approving an amendment to the ma, can I even do this?
Let's do, let's do.
Yeah, we'll do the first one.
Yes. You're introducing the ordinance and waiving the reading of.
I introduce the ordinance and waive the reading of ordinance number four one three dash one, four one nine dash one three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Dornbecker, seconded that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now Councilmember Hall?
Motion to adopt the resolution number three one four zero. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 3140-13, approving an amendment to the master fee schedule to add license and related fees for the implementation of the Tax Cabs and Pedicabs ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that, since there was a separate resolution? Just want to make sure everybody's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, we'll see that again in 30 days, apparently. We're going to move on now to our administrative item, Yountville's greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions inventory.
Good evening.
Yes.
Tonight, we are presenting to you the 2010 Greenhouse Gas Inventory for Yountville's Community-Wide Emissions. And the inventory is the result of the effort and input of the Greenhouse Gas Ad Hoc Committee that's comprised of Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Dornbecker. And I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to Brian Reyes, who is the town's consultant that completed this document for us, and after he presents the report, will turn to me to make our recommendation.
Thank you. Welcome this evening. Had a feeling that's why you were here.
Yes. Am I going to have control over the slide, or any of the?
We'll control it for you.
Okay, I'll just say, give a signal.
Give a wave or next, or-
Or give a wave or a nag, or-
Bob might even just move you along at his pace.
Yes, go to that.
That one right there.
You can just maybe raise that microphone up just slightly to make sure that we can-
Sure.
-hear you on the record.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, as Sandra had mentioned, it's the 2010 Town of Yountville Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory for the year 2010. Oh, not yet.
Oh, bad start, Bob.
I first wanted to thank the ad hoc committee members, Councilmember Dornbecker and Mueller, as well as the planning staff, Sandra and Bob, and the town manager, Steve, for helping, provide feedback and helping putting this inventory together. Before we move on, the presentation will cover briefly what are greenhouse gas emissions, just some information, basic information, and we'll get right into the results of the inventory. And lastly, what are the next steps typically taken on the state level as well as on the local level? So, next slide, please. So, greenhouse gases, there are six of them. Most commonly known is carbon dioxide, CO2. Other greenhouse gases include methane, which is 20 times more potent than CO2, nitrous oxide, which typically comes from tailpipes on cars, about 300 times, 10 times more potent, and then refrigerants round out the rest, HFCs, PFCs, sulfur hexides. Those are all ranged from 43,000 to 24,000 times more potent than CO2. The important thing to know is that everyone and everything is, is gauged according to carbon dioxide. So, next slide, please. How do we calculate emissions, particularly for this inventory? We look at activity data. And that activity data, we look at the built environment primarily. So, we look at the kilowatt-hours and the terms via PG&E, and that's from building activity. Vehicle miles traveled include transportation on the road. Gallons of diesel and gasoline, we also look at the fuel consumption within the boundaries of Yountville. So, this may come from backup generators and, and things like that. And lastly, the tons of solid waste that is disposed. In this case, everything that is disposed of at Upper Valley Disposal Services at the Clover Flat Landfill. So, we take that activity data, click the next, and we multiply it by the emission factor. And the emission factor is widely vetted by the California Resources Board, and so, these are factors we use. So, next slide. And we get, what we have is carbon dioxide equivalents, and hit the next. And when we calculate and we report emissions, everything is in metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents, MT CO2E. And to give you a physical scale, the size of a metric ton, volume-wise, that's what we have there. Some students built it on a field with a, with a, with a professor, and that's what it looks like. So, next slide. Getting right to the inventory, there are widely accepted protocols by ICLI, which is International Council on Local Environmental Initiatives. It's a nonprofit, member-driven group, and they provide support for local municipalities and cities and towns in calculating greenhouse gas emissions as well, as well as looking to the next steps, such as climate action planning. They look at, the ICLI protocols look at specific sectors. They require five sectors, and the first is residential. They assess commercial, industrial, and the third is included in this particular inventory is the water and wastewater sector. The next sector is transportation, and that includes on-road vehicles, and that just refers to passenger vehicles, buses, transit, freight, traveling on the local side streets, as well as, in this case, in Yountville, Highway 29, which runs within the boundaries. Off-road vehicles include construction equipments, lawn and garden equipment. All that is assessed. The next two is, well, yeah, the, the next one is solid waste, thank you. Next is solid waste. And then, the last is optional agriculture. In this case, for the town of Yountville, given the agricultural makeup and the history of Yountville, we thought it would be relevant to assess, to see the contribution agriculture has on emissions. So, before we actually get to the results, it's important to know the types of emissions that occur and according to definitions in the protocol. And so, we have what we call activity versus source emissions. Activity emissions are use of energy and materials, whether they occur within the boundary of Yountville or outside, that emit greenhouse gases. A source emission is a physical activity that occurs with, or physical source that occurs within the town boundaries. So, for example, backup generator, generators. Next slide, or not next slide, this, next figure. So, when we looked at, when we frame the emissions and report it, we, you can look at the total community-wide emissions. So, that's every activity occurring within the boundaries of Yountville, geopolitical boundaries. The unique makeup of Yountville includes the Veterans Home, which is one of the largest energy users, actually, in the state. So, we felt it was important to understand what those emissions were like. So, that second circle is smaller in terms of emissions, and it excludes the Veterans Home. The protocol itself, and this is where it gets possibly a little confusing, but this will clear it out, they call it significantly influence. And this is what we're going to take a look at it. And it's a smaller subset of the total community-wide emissions. According to the definition, significantly influence is emissions and activities that the town has operational control or regulatory influence over. And this is helpful for a town or a city to understand, so they can make meaningful impact and decide specifically what they can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, next slide. So, here's the results. It's kind of a large table, but I'd like to draw your attention to the first column, and these are the sectors we broke it up into. Remember, the five required sectors. In this case, we parsed out transportation on-road and transportation off-road. And that was because we wanted to see specifically where we, where the most emissions were partitioned to. The second column is your community-wide emissions. I just want to draw your attention down to the total. So, it was community-wide, including the Veterans Home and Highway 29, about 30,000, upwards of 30,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. But again, we wanted to understand what was the contribution of the Veterans Home. So, looking at that third column over, about 10,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent the Veterans Home emitted during 2010. So, that brings down the emissions down to 19,740. The last column, if you can click again, I highlighted that red because that is what the town should look at in terms of what they have operational regulatory authority over. And that'll be very helpful when making decisions to, in the future, on the policy level about reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So, I'll go specifically into those sectors briefly in the following slides.
Vice Mayor, I think, has a question real quickly.
Just before, because this was one question I had.
Sure, we want to back up.
I mean, the primary reason we're excluding the Veterans Home, just so everybody's clear, is that we have no jurisdictional capability to do anything-
Yes.
-there. Why on the, what, and I'm sure you'll go into it, but the residential, is, is the Veterans Home classified under the commercial and water, wastewater, as opposed to residential, since I would think there's 1,000 people who live there? Why does the number not go down at all from the 3922 in the first column?
That's good.
3922 in the second column.
Observation from that column to that column. That might be a typo. What, no, no, let me, let me say that again. So, that is not a typo. The residential sector in the Veterans Home, excluding the Veterans Home, that, the Veterans Home contribution was only due to the first two sectors, which is the commercial and water, wastewater sector, and then the on-road transportation sector. Everything else is the rest of the community. So, that, the, the third column over, it says excluding Veterans Home, is just taking out the emissions from, from, due to the Veterans Home, only in those two sectors. They only contributed to those two sectors, not the residential sector.
So, I guess, just to clarify the question, the residential quarters at the, the Veterans Home, which are multi-person, does that fall under the commercial and wastewater-
Correct.
-sector as opposed to residential?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. Residential only refers to the, I believe it was 10,050-ish homes that residences in the town of Yountville.
Yeah, 1,000, I would assume. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, no problem. Lastly, before I move on, the significantly influenced emissions, the total is 13,841 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. So, if we can focus on those emissions, we can make a serious headway towards reducing emissions. So, looking specifically at the sectors, next slide. The, again, we're going under the significantly influenced framework, and the commercial water, wastewater sector contributed the most at 5,830. If you look within that, it's the natural gas consumption via PG&E and electricity consumption as the top two. The wastewater treatment plant, methane emissions from venting of, from the wastewater treatment plant, was about 608. So, it's relatively small. Next slide, please. The second-largest contributor to emissions were the residential sector at 3,922 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Similar to the commercial sec, and water, wastewater sector, natural gas and electricity were the biggest contributors. Other fuels on the bottom there just include, very small, it was wood combustion and backup diesel generator, generators on the residential level. Next slide. Another, the third greatest was on-road transportation at 1,838 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. I do want to point out that this does not include Highway 29. Again, this, we decided, ad hoc committee, that Highway 29 wasn't under, they had very little influence to determine who goes through there, or what happens there. So, that local urban roads refers to side streets. And that side streets contributed, the third largest, at 1,814. The other Yountville trolley was just, we calculated based on diesel consumption. And so, it was only about 25, 24 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent for the year 2010. Next slide, please. Off-road transportation, against significant influences, includes construction equipment, lawn and gardening equipment, entertainment equipment, lighting, lighting and entertainment equipment, among others. And that totaled about 1,126 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Next slide, please. The second lowest contributor was agriculture, and it, at 695. But, looking at agricultural off equipment, which is like tractors and trailers, those were the biggest contributors within that sector. Nitrogen fertilizer use was very little compared to. Next slide. And the lowest contributor to emissions was solid waste, and this includes from residential, commercial, and drop box landfills. And it totaled about 431 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Next slide, please. So, to summarize what we found, again, for 2010, we, at the significantly influenced framework, according to the ICLI protocols, the town should look at 13,841 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent to focus on. And the top three emitting sectors were basically your buildings and your roads. So, the commercial water, wastewater, residential, and then the transportation sector. Next slide, please. So, on a state level, what's usually said is emission reduction goals. And many of you are familiar with Assembly Bill 32, Global Watering Solutions Act. And they set reducing greenhouse gas emissions, 1990 levels by the year 2020. Napa, locally, county-wise, the NCTPA, established the, and forgive me, N-triple-C-A-F, and that's NAPA, County-Wide Community Climate Action Framework. And they set, they recommended 15% reduction below 2005 levels by the year 2020. That's on par with that AB 32. Subsequently, Yountville adopted, I believe in 2010, a similar target based on a 2005 inventory, conducted in 2009. Next click. The 2010 baseline, the 2010 inventory herein was carried out by the town of Yountville. And it's important that, to know that the 2010 inventory, there was new protocol sets, adopted recently in 2012. And also, the emissions, 13,841 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent are much less than what the 2005 adopted target was based on for the town of Yountville. So, given that there's new protocols, and then you have a much less responsibility for, for addressing greenhouse gas emissions, we recommend, ad hoc committee, as well as the planning staff, that you adopt this particular inventory as a new baseline, and that is 20% below 2010 levels by 2020. And that's based off this 2010 inventory. That is still in line with the projections of AB 32, as well as still in line with the N-triple-C-A-F reduction targets. And of course, another recommendation is to continue membership with ICLI, because they provide critical, critical support and information for the committee members in the town. Next slide. So, what are the next steps? One more click. On the state level, they've already adopted the renewable portfolio standards, increased vehicle fuel efficiency via the car manufacturers, reduced carbon intensity of the transportation fuels. Excuse me. And they also provide financial mechanisms at the state and local level for conservation and energy conservation projects. Typically taken on a local level, Yountville is no different from the rest of California. They basically look at the built, and the built environment, which is buildings and the roads. So, those are usually what are addressed. And to benchmark and understand how the impact of those actions, monitoring reporting, and reporting is, is tantamount. Also, what's typically taken is climate change elements are adopted in general plans or something equivalent. And usually, actions taken within those are citing solar, focusing on the built environment, also is conserving agricultural land and open space. And I believe is important is working with and, and engaging the community, because they are the ones that will steward looking forward and have the vision, not only in short-term, but long-term planning, and also energy conserve, conservation. Next slide, please. Lastly, these are, based on the inventory, 2010 inventory, these are options that Yountville can take. First, looking at the buildings and the built environment, renewable energy, energy efficiency, water conservation, particularly here in the West Coast as we are dry. Looking at the other part of the built environment, roads, reducing vehicle miles traveled, encouraging non-vehicle transport modes, bolstering Yountville trolley or bike lanes would be an- um, encouraging non-vehicle transport modes, bolstering, um, yeah, Youngville trolley or bike lanes would be an option. Um, lastly, other things that w- we would continue to do is, i- is bolstering zero waste and getting to that goal. Um, and the state, um, is, are, they are doing, or the state is doing, um, tremendous headway on, on that end. And it's, I would say it's a, zero waste is also an easy way to engage the public as, um, it's something tactile, something they can see and, and something they can participate, whether it's consolidating waste. And it allows them to rethink behavior, especially when you do outreach and education. Lastly, is long-range sustainability planning. Um, a lot of these up on top are short-term, um, some long-term and midterm, but looking at the vision for Youngville as an option and long-range sustainability planning, um, I'd highly recommend. Um, next click. So in order to assess all this, and that green border is supposed to include renewable energy, as you're going along in the planning process, is another option is to continually tracking the progress to benchmark and see, uh, and get credit for, um, greenhouse gas emissions reduced, um, feasibility achieved. Um, and so that will be part of an option for climate action planning. Next. And that is my presentation. Uh, are there any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Very thorough, uh, questions about the presentation. I do have a question.
Sure.
Hopefully, you can answer this. It has to do with Senate Bill three seventy-five.
Yes.
And all that you just talked about was AB thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And is that because SB three seventy-five pertains only to transportation, uh, emissions?
Uh, no, I, uh, SB three seventy-five is in addition, uh, a legislative driver similar to AB three to, uh, thirty-two. This is decisions and protocols that were made, um, and frameworks takes into account SB three seventy-five. Um, and the Metropolitan Planning Organization here, which is MTC, is, um, is tasked with rolling that out regionally here in the SF Bay Area. And they've done this sustainable community strategy. Um, and so, yes, transportation is their focus, but everything that, everything's connected through the roads, uh, transportation. So they also look at the buildings and look at an overall comprehensive assessment of communities.
And so this report and your recommendations don't really involve anything with SB three seventy-five because it's such a small amount of emission. You, you talked about removing Highway twenty-nine from the calculation entirely.
Correct.
And is that the reason, or is there some other reason that we would propose eliminating twenty-nine and its impacts?
Um, Sandra, do you want to answer?
Um, it would be based on the significantly influenced framework that we're, um, opting per- to pursue, uh, because, um, we don't have regulatory or other control over highway emissions. And so any efforts we take within the town to reduce those, um, would be meaningless. So the focus is on, um, emissions that we can have an impact over.
And that's the same reasoning for the veterans home exclusion?
Correct, exactly.
Correct.
We can set those parameters at our level.
Yes.
As long as
Yes.
they fall within, as you mentioned, this framework, general framework.
Correct.
The framework is much looser than I think I originally interpreted. I thought we had to abide by the same exact calculations that every other city in town had to.
Well, there's a new, um, two thousand twelve update to the protocol that provided the opportunity to do the significantly influenced, um, framework, and that's the one that, um, that Brian corrected and fixed.
And, 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 um, it's still important to, it, within the narrative and the reports, uh, that the planning staff had attached to their report, um, it also includes reporting and saying this is the total community-wide emissions. And so it, it logically just parse downs a- and creates a smaller subset, which is the significantly influence. Doesn't mean, uh, it, the significantly influence just means something that the town of Youngville has control over. But the larger emissions is, it's still part of your community. And that doesn't mean that Youngville can't or cannot still impact it or responsible, but significantly influence is what you should look at. And you should, you will be able to make those reduction goals if you just look at that total overall.
So it's something that we, it's, it's lower on the priority list is, is kind of what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Outside of that, just the, uh, area of influence that we have almost complete control over.
Right.
But we may still try to do something about how the traffic backs up on twenty-nine and, and all the emissions sit here and, and waft in into the town.
Yes. And I would also say, if you want to think about it in a slightly simpler say, what we're focusing on is what we can actually get credit for. So in other words, the policy actions that the community is going to take, we need to be able to do that. So we can say these actions have resulted in this. And for example, we don't have the ability to change the miles per gallon efficiency of vehicle in the state of California. It's not our purview. So what we really do, and we don't have regulatory control over what the state does with the veterans home. So it's really, um, I think our focus was to make sure that our baseline survey, uh, based on the new two thousand twelve protocols was as accurate as we could get it. And therefore, we pick our strategies in line with that in which we have our ability to influence.
Right, okay.
And, and if I may add, um, the veterans home, i- if, for example, you decide to do something like bolster Youngville trolley and the access to that to the veterans home, even, it, it doesn't really mean excluding veterans home from any decision. It's still an opportunity to work with them. So, um, maybe excluding is not the, uh, best word to use, but it's just separate from, we're just recognize it separately, not so much saying, you guys do your, handle your own thing and we will. It's, I think, the communication between yourself, the veterans home, and as well as with, on a regional level, uh, or county level, the NCTPA, or even the MTC and, and keeping that in mind and working with them, um, uh, you know, it, there's still a connectiveness there.
Well, and you mentioned, I think it was like ten thousand units that we don't really have control over, but we've identified it. And then if we can influence that ten thousand, we will make an effort to do so.
Yes, and you could still show it within a report, but, you know, this is, as, as Steve said, this is what we're focusing on.
Right.
With a significantly influenced framework.
Great. Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
I'll go after Hall.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor, Mayor. So thank you for the report. It's good information. Where I work, we had a GHG done, uh, seems like two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand what the recommendations are and, and they're meaningful. And I think we could probably put in place some things or plans to try to affect that, but, um, what if we don't accomplish that? What is the outcome? Are we going to get a slap on the wrist? Or, I mean, what, I mean?
Right. Um.
What's the incentive to do it? I mean, and I'm not saying that it's not a noble cause because I think it's extremely important, but what's, what's our incentive to do it? I mean,
Right.
the community needs to understand that this isn't something that we just cook up and we put a pretty sideshow on. This is meaningful, so let's get to brass tacks.
So, so, so two incentives. Uh, one incentive, the first incentive would be to have a more efficient government. So if, for example, you cite solar, as you would know, you'd save not only greenhouse gas emissions, but also costs. Uh, but the second incentive is there is legislator diver- drivers via AB thirty-two. Now, it doesn't necessarily say cities, you do this or else. It's more of, uh, California Air Resources Board, your task would roll in this out and scoping this and providing guidance for, uh, the cities and, and/or the towns. And so the, the state is asking cities and towns to be a part of this. And in return, I think, um, you know, there's financial mechanisms coming down from the state level to achieve certain conservation projects. So to answer your question, there isn't a hard and fast or else. There is a threat looming with that if cities don't prove that. Um, it is prudent for cities and a lot of towns to already do this because it's, it's better to, uh, to do it now versus waiting a year before that twenty-twenty and then the state of California says, well, actually, we're going to slap you on the wrist. So, um, it would just be, uh, it's, it's a better, uh, do it now before it gets too close to the date and possibly more expensive.
Well, and I, I think it's, what I find interesting in, in the report and, and the recommendation is that, you know, this was data that was compiled two years, what year were you in? Two, uh, three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
For the, for probably the entire year of two thousand ten, I think, is where you guys probably took the analysis, January to December.
Correct.
We've taken many actions in place of this. How likely is it, in your, uh, opinion, that we can accomplish twenty percent from where we were in two thousand ten?
I think, I think it's highly likely. Um, I, a lot of the investments that the, um, city has done, whether it's the community center itself, Grams and working on the citing the solar, on the wastewater treatment plan and, and
Methane recapture, I mean, there's all these.
And the methane recapture, the government has shown on its own buildings and its own property that, that they'll achieve twenty percent, no problem. On a community-wide scale, that's a little, little more up in the air, but that's completely achievable if, um, I believe if, say, the education and outreach was out there and you let businesses who are probably your, again, the commercial wastewater, water, the commercial sector basically is the highest contributor. If some of those restaurants were understood, the financial mechanisms and the offsets that they can get from, say, citing solar or, uh, retrofitting and being more energy efficient. Um, so in my opinion, yes, I think you guys can meet that by two thousand twenty, whether it's, um, the local govern- the government operations or it's the community itself.
Or a combination of both.
Yes, a combination of both.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions, uh, Vice Mayor? Then I do want to offer, if there's anything to add from the ad hoc committee, but if you feel like the presentation has spoken for you, then we don't need to just rehash that, but Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I, just to follow up, um, I guess my question has to do, um, not necessarily with the, the penalties or, you know, wh- why we have to do it in terms of what if we don't, what, what penal, you know, what's going to happen to the town? It more has to do with, if we're supposed to come up with a number that's twenty percent reduction, what part of that are we in theory responsible for? And I ask that question in looking at the total emissions of the town being thirty thousand metric equivalents. Um, but what we're saying is we can only influence thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-one.
Correct.
Are, are we in some way responsible for finding ways that says it's twenty percent of the thirty thousand number? Or do we look and say, okay, well, the state of California is requiring, you know, higher, um, you know, higher mile per gallon, therefore that's going to filter its way in transportation and they're requiring more wind energy and that's going to filter its way into residential. And then we have the little piece that we might be able to, to impact. Is that, is that how the, because this is not an implementation plan.
No.
This is just an inventory.
It's just an inventory.
Is that how that will work? Is we'll take all those different pieces and get down to, is, is the town as an entity, as a jurisdiction, twenty percent, but we're not responsible for having a plan that will cut twenty percent?
Of the thirty thousand.
Of the total thirty thousand.
Right, correct. And so the inventory and showing the, again, showing the larger community-wide and the veterans home, and then finally the significantly influenced, which is a widely accepted protocol, even with the California, California Air Resources Board, it just shows within a narrative that, look, saying what you said, total community-wide emissions, we, we see this. Here's a smaller set of emissions which we can influence because we can't tell the veterans home, which is a state-owned facility, what to do or any kind of authority over their budget or operations. So, correct.
So in theory, are we going to say, you know, we're going to aim for twenty percent of what we can influence?
Yes.
And everybody else who, it's their jurisdiction, it's up to them to deal with that other twenty percent. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do want to point out that part of the action in the resolution is that clarification that you're referring to so that we aren't stuck with a higher objective. So this is a more refined approach. And again, trying to be a little bit more realistic on what we have the ability to influence. So it is correcting the baseline and clarifying which one we want to use and why.
Any added, uh, comments from our ad hoc members or?
Um, yes, please. First of all, it's been really wonderful to work with, uh, Marjorie and, uh, Brian and Sandra and Town Manager on this. Um, it's confusing, but you made it quite simple. And, um, I'm, I'm really happy because we didn't really get to the next steps so much. But we are already, as a town, taking steps by the, through the methane recapture project and the photovoltaic up at the wastewater treatment plant and things. So I, I'm very excited that we are already in the framework of taking the steps that I think we need to do. But thank you very much. It's very, um, it was a not the most exciting project I've ever worked on, but it was very interesting and informative. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Because I see we have no members of the public here, so we can just continue, uh, council discussion or, uh, take action on the item. Any additional discussion from?
I thi- I think I would just like to kind of focus everybody in terms of the, the big picture. So this is our inventory. And when we, uh, first started it, we, um, putting things together from two thousand five with our, when we talked about this two years ago, we had a fifteen percent reduction. But it took us a while to really, using the new protocol, get to our new numbers and our new inventory. So we increased our reduction to twenty percent. So we do have flexibility if anybody is interested. This is, the twenty percent isn't anything that's dictated by the state of California. It's what we think is reasonable since we really haven't put a lot of stuff in place and we plan to do more. We've done some. We haven't calculated how much that contributes, but we, we've kind of done back of the envelope. We know it will contribute mostly to the government inventory, which we'll hear next month. So in that government inventory, we're also recommending twenty percent. So there is flexibilities, point one. If you wanted to establish fifteen percent rather than twenty percent, that would be a council prerogative or, or you could even go higher if you wanted, but we're recommending twenty. And then the next step, uh, after we adopt this, and also you'll see a very similar report for the government-controlled operations. As you can see, it's a very small subset of the community-wide, but we'll go through that next month, is putting together the climate action plan. The climate action plan, there's a calculator that we'll use. So let's say you decide to plant a hundred trees. You can punch in the numbers and you'll see how many CO2 units did you decrease. Or if you put solar on a third of the buildings in town, how much will that contribute? So that's what you're going to be seeing next, and we'll be working through that. We really want to engage the community at that step because I think, you know, when they really participate, it's really going to hopefully have significant, uh, to, well, the commercial is very significant. And so we do have to outreach to them and get them involved. Otherwise, things are probably only going to go up and not come down, as well as the residences. So we really want to engage the public and the commercial businesses so that they can help us, uh, with the climate action plan so that we can really see our way towards this, uh, proposed twenty percent reduction. So that's kind of the, the big picture.
Thank you for that. Any additional discussion or, uh, action to be taken?
I'll make a motion. Unless there's any further discussion, nothing?
Just ask them.
No, just making sure. To adopt Resolution number three-one-four-one-dash-thirteen, adopting the two thousand ten community inventory of greenhouse gas emissions, recognizing two thousand ten as a baseline year and establishing a revised reduction target of twenty percent of two thousand ten emissions by the year two thousand twenty.
I'll second it.
No more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And again, thank you to Councilmember Dornbecker and Councilmember Mueller, uh, for, and, and for you, and to staff, uh, for the hours that went into this to make it understandable. And, uh, I think as, as we discussed, these are, um, the state administration's goals as they have been set now. That can change on any given administration. The priorities may change, but, uh, I think by default, this is at least the right thing for us to be doing for our community. So we can, we can move forward with that alone. But I think there'll be, there'll be maybe fewer carrots and more sticks as the years tick on. As, as you mentioned, Brian, that, um, people are going to have a hard time catching up quickly if there are real penalties that get imposed as we start to get closer to that, uh, target date. So thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I follow up question. I, if I can just ask a question while you're here, if, if you know, or others. Um, Councilwoman Mueller, you made the comment that we're not required to do twenty percent. We could do fifteen percent. Or what's the minimum? I mean, there must be, the law must have a minimum.
Well, it doesn't really set out very specific ranges. They do put targets out. And that's why, uh, before this new protocol came in place, that the target was, uh, fifteen percent. But it was also based on having all your inventories done in two thousand and five. And many places are much farther along than we are, but we're getting there. And so since we've kind of compressed our timeline to this target goal of two thousand twenty, we thought maybe a more accelerated, uh, target would put, uh, you know, some maybe a more accelerated target would put, you know, some fire behind our engines here to kind of get going. So, there really isn't a mandated high, a minimum and maximum number, but 15 to 20% is really what everyone's doing in the county and surrounding communities.
Also, if I may add, in addition to that, the protocols which inventory and provide those frameworks were updated from the 2005 baseline to now this 2010 baseline. So, they differ and so hence, in addition, it was important, I think, we believe, to recommend an adjusted baseline to 20%. But it still meets the overall legislation, back to your original question, which is the 1990 levels by 2020. There is no official percentage written down in that legislation nor in SB 375, but those are just common percentages taken on either at the state, county, or local levels that meet that goal.
Well, the reason I ask this, because if we, this is going to continue on to more tangible actions, is we're talking about, you know, talking to the residential community or the business community about taking certain steps. These steps cost money. So, they're going to turn around and say to us, well, why did you say 20%? Why is it 10%? Or where are you coming up with this? Or why should I spend this kind of, you know, money to install X, Y, or Z? So, that's, I'm curious, as we go down the road, depending on what methods we use to try to achieve these goals, that's going to be the big question. It all sounds great until somebody tells you, you need to spend money to abate a certain situation.
And we'll deal with that moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
We're going to move on to our staff informational reports. I see we have a couple on here. Open call for art walk artists and potential opportunities to improve parking supply using town-owned property.
So, I will start with the open call for art walk artists. I just wanted to give you a brief update that the newly sort of appointed Yountville Arts Commission has worked on an open call for art walk artists, which is not something that we have done before. Shockingly, all of the art has come to us and we're now looking at filling some newly-installed pads as well as expanding the art that we have lined up to rotate in and be a little more active with our rotating of the art walk art. And so, those went out on the 16th of October and it's a 30-day, or excuse me, a 60-day turnaround. It's gone out pretty broadly. I actually got an applicant from Austria yesterday, which was interesting. The three different art walk calls that are out right now, there's a general call for artists and then there is art by veteran for one of the pads in Veterans Park. And then also a patriotic piece that's also for one of the pads in Veterans Park. So, they're very excited. We're very anxious to see what we get from that and hopefully build our database for future art that would rotate into the walk. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm wondering for another subject that's coming up, which is the Festival of Lights, how are volunteers coming along?
That's actually organized through the Chamber of Commerce for the Festival of Lights, so I'm not sure, but...
Does it seem like there are enough?
The last meeting I attended, it seemed like they were doing okay.
Okay. Thank you.
They can always use more.
Yes.
The other, the parking supply conversation?
Yes. We have a visual presentation for you. And tonight, I want to let everybody here in the audience and at home know that this is a concept discussion. Town council as well as members of the community have suggested that the town may want to be or play a greater role in helping to improve the parking supply. So, what I want to point, and I have to point out, staff was very nice in giving me the label there, but a lot of significant contributions from Bob Tieranin in the planning especially with this and then Graham and Jacob Solis in our Public Works Department. So, it's a visual presentation and what we're going to focus on are some locations where the town owns property. So, typically, that's going to be our publicly-owned properties and areas adjacent with the park. Now, these do not include cost estimates or anything. We're just sort of kind of getting a litmus test as we develop our future CIP programs. Are there some areas where you might say, yes, it makes sense for us to look at doing some of these and it might help improve the public parking supply in certain parts of the neighborhood? So, with that, bear with me and we're going to take a little visual tour and a little conceptual tour of what could be. But I do want to make sure everybody realizes this is all very conceptual and formal engineering and some of those things would need to occur if there was any interest. So, I don't want anybody to think that next week there will be a bid going out for a parking lot or a modification, but it's more of a conceptual discussion. All right. For those of you that may not be familiar, this is Yountville Community Park, our park to be renamed through a community process yet to be determined. You'll note that what we're identifying in the orange hatch is areas of potential. Along Washington, the area at the very north end towards the cemetery is actually flatter and potentially we would look at some head-in parking. As you may know, towards the intersection with Jackson, there's a little bit of a steep area and it may require retaining wall, getting a bit more expensive. 15 or so spaces could be put in along the cemetery simply with some paint and restructuring and then utilizing some of the existing area, we could put diagonal parking. And you'll see we have very little impact at all on the usefulness of the park. Next, please.
So, how many total spaces were those little orange areas?
We're going to print all of this out and give it to you so you'll have a little. And again, what I will say, if you want to go back, because I have to admit, I don't have my...
I couldn't read. Councilmember Hall said 58.
It's significant in Yountville.
Plus 15 plus 8.
I would say somewhere between 40 and 50 is plausible in Yountville Community Park and I might lean slightly towards the 40. And again, this is not an all or nothing because, for example, we can do parts of these and they can be done in phases.
Paint's cheap.
Paint, you know, the 15 there and then there's 35. One section there, for example, the retaining wall would get expensive, so, you know, that 35, maybe 20, that's fairly inexpensive. The 8 on the area there have modest costs, but the area where retaining wall would be the most expensive. So, I'm just saying, we're very conceptual and then you can kind of see, the area Bob is showing right there would be parallel to the street, which would be where retaining wall, some people do park there now. You can see down there, most of you are familiar, that's a little wider and flat and probably with a little bit of grading and some paint. We could do similar to the commuter parking lot without paving it, although at some point in time, we could pave it to finalize it or a pervious pavement. And the comment, obviously, about paint along the cemetery is, paint's relatively inexpensive. And then that one quadrant up on the opposite there, again, it's almost a two-to-one ratio when you take out parallel parking and do some type of a diagonal parking. All right. So, that's Yountville Community Park and that's our, I think, our biggest opportunity. And again, that could potentially help to improve some of the parking demands and the impacts from what is now the very successful No-Yo district with, you know, everybody got used to the restaurants that weren't quite performing as well. And now that we have a very vibrant restaurant district in No-Yo, obviously, a lot of this would be encouraged to be utilized by employee parking, allowing some of the additional area. But it would keep, in most cases, a lot of those employees out of the adjacent neighborhoods where they're going to have a tendency to gravitate if we don't work. And again, it's areas that we can influence completely by ourself. All right. This is our effort to kind of look at what we're referring to as the central core. So, we went from No-Yo to the central core. And again, these are all concepts. We're not adding a value-laden, but there's some opportunities if we chose to look at parking adjacent and around Vandeleer Park that we could perhaps improve that. I will share with you that there is some opposition to improving parking in those areas from some members of the community. So, that one's not necessarily a slam dunk, but it should be looked at in terms of the analysis. Then there's some potential for looking at, do we do something on Humboldt to improve the capacity? Humboldt's fairly wide right-of-way and we may be able to do some angled parking in this section here and, again, improve the capacity. And the other spot you'll see there is right in front of Town Hall. We can pick up three spaces above what the current number are in front by pushing out the sidewalk back five to 10 feet and using the existing right-of-way, moving the sidewalk in, and we could go from five to, say, eight or nine. So, again, that's us being part of the solution. Same thing to where we show on the side there of Town Hall. Little more challenging on that one, but same concept. That one might be a little more restrictive in the total number. But again, the idea would be, how do we use some of the space that the town has full land use control of and potentially improve the parking supply in areas where it's, we know there's some demand and interest for it? So, that's the central community.
I have a question about the central community. When our Weber Street extension to the bike path or the Vine Trail, have we considered spots along that?
It's informally utilized that way now and we've been encouraging French Laundry Garden employee parking along that section. So, again, as part of any broader improvement, I think that would certainly be an area we would want to highlight. Weber in that section does not have, is not as wide or improved as in some other areas that we really have, but we have been encouraging French Laundry Garden employee parking in that area. All right. Next.
Of course, always.
This is a concept. Again, I don't want anybody to overanalyze, but this is just to show you what we're talking about in a graphic scale. We're not talking about the wholesale removal of the front lawn or anything, but we're already using some of the public right-of-way where the parallel parking. So, you see, it's a little bump in sidewalk would be continued re-landscaping. And I'm just saying, this is a concept of what, some angled parking there. And again, we go from four parking spaces that are parallel to a total of seven by using this approach.
75% increase.
More like a 50%.
No. Four to seven is 75%.
Stick with Richard.
That's okay.
All right, I'm sorry, you're...
We'll let him give the presentation.
Sorry.
I'll defer. I'm saying, we're basically doubling. So, I think we're saying, I'm looking at, we're doubling the number of spaces. But anyway, and again, this is something that we may want to revisit. I have some good news. The Town Hall project looks like we're going to come in under budget, so there may be some allocation of, all right, I'll knock. But we, it's just something. And again, I show this because this is, again, some of these may say, well, why would we do that? But again, in our community, picking up three or four parking spaces in the right area is very significant. Oak Circle, this one has two areas. The area right there is the open space parcel. We also know that Oak Circle is also a very narrow and what we have there is, in many cases, employee restaurant parking stretching down and it does create a potential safety hazard. But what we're looking at, we'll go ahead and, next slide.
Our liability insurance paid up.
And again, I want, really want to stress because I did run into a resident that told me at one point they were very concerned that the town was trying to put a parking lot in there. And I want to convey to people, we're not. If you take, again, here's just a very conceptual look, what we're already talking about, what we're taking is, again, doubling what's already parking there, doing it in a way that can be facilitated on an angle, bump out the sidewalk, still maintain a significant open space component, not turning it into. But that would really reduce the way that, the negative impact of the parking in the street area. And again, you can see it's a modest cost, but that is a conceptual idea of what something like that would look like there.
Is that 12 spaces?
Pardon?
Is that 12 spaces?
10. So, we would be going from about five that are parking there now to 10 that would be identified. So, I'm still thinking that's a 50. I'm doubling the amount of parking, so you can tell me the percentage increase.
That's doubling.
That's doubling.
I'm just, I'm going to use a simpler term.
100%.
All right.
Steve.
Our last one is, the town owns a significant amount of property on the south end of Veterans Memorial Park. So, this potential space could be developed and we think there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 20-plus parking spaces depending on the ultimate utilization. And some of this is being used informally now, so this would formalize it and make it, obviously, a more all-weather safe environment. So, anyway, I just share that with you. What we would like is some thoughts on whether this is something you want to see us proceed with, if there's some priority areas. And again, none of this has been put in the budget. What I would share with you is, the Oak Circle area, the concept will move forward in the design when we bring in the path corridor planning for that. So, I mean, it's, but that's, we're not necessarily talking like that happening next week, but that'd be identified. The south, the Veterans Memorial Park is something that we've said we may look at getting together. Again, based on community and resident input, it may be that the most pressing need right now is in the No-Yo neighborhood and that may be where it's most appropriate for us to look at and maybe come back with some refinement on some budget estimates. But anyway, it's an informational item, so what I'd really like to digest, we're going to make you hard copies of this. We'll also get it posted on the town's website so everybody can take a look at it. But what we'd just like to get is a little bit of community dialogue so that we can try to refine some of these and be a part of the solution to improving parking supply in Yountville.
Is there any immediate feedback on the report from council? I would just say, put in the lead that this is a concept, just a philosophy of how to respond. I know, I know, you got it. So, people do not think that we have this in our capital improvement plan?
I think, Mayor, you're so right and we've tried to put, you know, concept drawing, concept, concept, because we are interested in people's feedback.
Okay.
And some people are going to love parking in other areas and some people are going to say not here, but that's part of the game.
Right.
But I think the message that we heard from the council is you want us to be part of the solution and part of it is we have to do some things differently than we have and are these potentially good things for us to look at?
I would just say the one of timely concern for me is in front of Town Hall here because if we don't do this, we need to do something else because we've killed the front.
With all clarification, the budget includes, we have an allowance for restoration, so that's included. That's why frankly...
We need to make a decision if we want to do something other than restoration.
If you want, what I would say, right, that would be how I would phrase it. I mean, we have the ability to re-landscape it within our existing budget. That, there's an allocation for that. The broader question would be, it doesn't make any sense for us to re-landscape it and then come back next year and tear it out if you'd like us to consider the parking. So, that's why I think in this particular case, you know, we might do a partial part of the landscape, knowing what it would be. And then in the spring, if we wanted to do the, you know, this is a relatively minor construction project. I don't want to underestimate the fact that there's engineering and grading and things like that, but it's not a, in the grand scheme of things we're doing, it's not the most complex project either. But you're right, that's why if we wanted to do that, some decisions need to be made sooner rather than later on this one. And then when we refine Yountville Community Park, we may be able to bring it in like four chunks and then you could digest chunk because some of those are low-cost items.
Really fast.
Vice Mayor?
When you say decisions sooner rather than later, we just canceled our last meeting. So, when is this, when is sooner? Like December 2nd or whatever that is?
Third would work.
The third is the next meeting.
I mean, I think it makes sense, so...
All right. We will have, thank you. With that, I will try to have an action item for some feedback on the third for you to take more formal action and I'll probably also add this to an ad hoc committee meeting to try to refine it. But I think we're sensing interest from the council, so that tells us what we need to do.
I'm interested in more parking in Yountville.
Okay, great. Moving on. Meeting reports?
And Bob has, Bob has one of the most exciting, unscheduled, unplanned informational items.
Wow. Bonus.
Information.
He's like, what?
What are you finding?
Oh, yeah. What'd you mix up there? Next time, we'll even make sure Bob knows he has a... Next time, we'll even make sure Bob knows he has a report.
We received delivery on two of the wayfinding posts that were going to be.
Microphone? Sorry, you're offline.
We're going to be looking at the, locating them at the locations in front of the marketplace, the wayfinding posts, two of them delivered. And the signs are ordered where, those will take a little longer. We're looking at probably putting some temporary ones on the, we have the substrates and the posts and everything. And we can put some temporary signs on the substrates until the permanent ones are delivered. A couple of more posts are probably going to arrive this, later this week or early next week as well.
Are we, do you have an anticipated schedule of, of installation of those signs? Are we talking before Thanksgiving?
Well, we could, I'm assuming the, he's rolling on the post now, the fabricator. So, I'm expecting the posts to be delivered within the next couple of weeks, all of them. And then we can do the temporary signs until, and then as the other ones come in, we can put them up. So there'll be signs up for the holidays.
So, well, I, I want to question about those temporary signs, because if they don't look good, one thing, we might not hear about some of the stuff we want from the public. But I think we will hear about the temporary signs if they don't look good. So I just want you to.
Well, they're going to, yeah, they're going to be looking temporary. So if we don't want them up, then we don't have to do that. But I, I was assuming they would prefer something up rather than nothing.
Well, I think that's more our decision than the, the retail sector's decision on, on that call. There may be a, a pressure from the businesses to put up something, but that's, that's really our decision to impact what aesthetic is happening on our main street.
The real key on this is, this is real. The fabricated posts are arriving. We have to install them. The signs have been ordered. And hopefully, the, our vendors will timely or more timely deliver, so that we can get all of this going. But the real key is, I know we've been talking about this for a long time now, and things are arriving. And Public Works has to go install and mount the posts. We got to cite them. So there's a little bit of lead time for the sign manufacturer to be following. And Bob is just being overly sensitive to the merchant communities that have been beating us up going, "When are we going to get these things?"
But my point, and to, I think, Councilmember Mueller's point, that's fine, but we don't want this to look bad.
We understand.
If it takes two more weeks.
Right.
To do it right, then that would be my recommendation. I don't know.
Yes.
If it's, I'm seeing mostly nods.
I paid a lot of money for a sign, so I want my dang sign.
Yeah. And I don't want to unring the bell of a bad sign. And what have we done after all this?
We hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. That's good news. That's very good news, Bob.
Yes. Let's not lose the fact that it is good that we're on the verge of having that project in the ground. Any other unannounced staff reports? No? Okay. I don't believe we have a flood control or Transportation and Planning Agency report this go around. Do we have a Upper Valley Waste Management?
No, we canceled our meeting. We'll be meeting in a couple of weeks.
Is there any other official commission reports that we have?
WIC is meeting within the next couple of weeks as well.
Could you just maybe say that or?
Watershed.
I know, into the microphone? Thank you.
The Watershed Information and Conservation Committee is meeting within the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other announcements from council? I've got a few here. No one else? Seeing no others? I did want to just mention a thank you to all Samantha and all the town staff that supported the Tug McGraw Foundation Fund Run, and the Halloween Haunted House, and all the other kids' activities here in the community center. That was a very fun afternoon, kind of kicked off the, the holiday week. And so, there were some, some fun costumes out there. I'll just leave it at that. The Napa Valley Film Festival is coming up, and there was an earlier report from Home Administrator about, on Veterans Day, November 11th, there is a series of films that are veteran-themed, that are free to veterans and at very low cost to the public. That kicks off the week on Monday. Tuesday, here at the community center, there will be kind of a pre-screening, and especially Yountville is encouraged to attend. The film is called Red Obsession, which has to do with the obsession in China for Bordeaux. So that is kind of a local topic also. So then, look for many people and many films throughout the week there that are available to all of us. I've also been participating for the last two days, and will continue to do so on Thursday with the Great Wine Capital's Global Network. This is a group of elected Chamber of Commerce, other elected officials from cities in Germany, South Africa, Portugal, Spain, New Zealand, Argentina, Italy, France, Chile. And we are hosting this year here, San Francisco slash Napa Valley. And it's really been a very interesting dialogue with all of these wine industry stakeholders and partners. Typically, in the past, it's been involving only the Board of Supervisors, and all five of them have been participating. But this year, all of us mayors have been invited to participate as well. And so we've had 100 percent participation up and down the valley. So that's been very positive. They are at Robert Mondavi Winery as we speak. And then they'll be throughout the valley tomorrow, learning more about the Napa Valley, care of the Napa Valley Vetners Association. So, you might see a few extra folks with unusual accents out there, but it'd be nice. Okay. Seeing no other announcements. Let's see, future agenda items are listed there. I see we have no closed session necessary. So with that, I'll, let's see, we're going to have an early call for our next meeting on December 3rd, a special joint meeting with the Napa County Board of Supervisors.
We're still, if I may, Mayor, that's still subject to confirmation.
We'll either have our regular meeting at 6:00, or we'll add the supervisors starting at 4:00.
Correct.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to that date at one of those two times.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.